Good evening, everybody. Welcome to Hackensack City Hall. Madam Clerk?
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Conestino?
Here.
Deputy Mayor Simms, Councilwoman Bataglia?
Here.
And Mayor LaBrus?
Here.
The Open Public Meetings Act notice having been published according to law with a copy on file in the City Clerk's office and a copy posted on the bulletin board in City Hall.
Okay, would everybody please rise for the flag salute? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. With that, we'll move on to the agenda. Ted?
Evening, Mayor and Council. Tonight is the Tuesday, January 23rd Cal Meeting, Council of the whole. First item for discussion is the ordinance amendment to Summit Avenue. Summit Avenue has a ordinance amendment for parking. And the issue of the parking is, is that, as you are aware, the Police Department has received numerous complaints from residents about parking on Summit Ave between Beach and Coolidge Place. The complaints essentially detail the fact that the length of Summit Ave is limited to two-hour parking only, except for areas between Beach and Central Ave. Due to these complaints, the Police Department is recommending Summit Ave Ordinance Number 170-10C at Summit Avenue between Essex Street and Anderson Street, and also Summit Ave between 170 through 71 East 3, edit Summit Ave from Central Ave to Passaic Street to read Summit Ave from Thompson Ave to Anderson Street. This would be applicable to street cleaning statutes of 170-8 would remain unchanged. That's the recommendation from the Police Department, and that's the recommendation for the ordinance amendment for Summit Avenue, basically changes the two-hour parking being amended.
Excuse me, so that mean they're gonna eliminate the parking in the right-hand side?
I don't know that. All I know is what the ordinance-
Parking on both sides.
I think all it's doing is making it consistent that it's two-hour parking only from now, basically from Essex to Anderson. But my question was in the two statements, one says Essex to Anderson and one says Thompson to Anderson. Is that because maybe there's no parking from Thompson to Essex? Leo, do you-
Yeah, I mean, I can tell you, because I've looked into this. I mean, do you have a copy of the memo handy?
I just looked inconsistent, because they-
There is some inconsistency in the way that the Police Department wrote the memo that I am trying to clarify. Because right-
Well, like, Thompson is the short street-
That's right.
-right before, like, if you're going or-
Yeah, there's no parking on Summit from Thompson to Essex.
And that's probably why, then, maybe they should both say, they should just be consistent.
Right now, what, right now, there's this one little three or four block where there is no parking regulation. Some of that, there's actually no parking either side. Some of it, there is two-hour parking. So, I'm trying to clarify exactly what they're asking for, because the changes they're requesting kinda say, one of the changes, the 170-10C deals with no parking at all. And, or no, sorry, one of them deals with no parking over two hours for anybody. The other is no parking over two hours for permit holders. So, it would not make sense to make both of these changes, because then you'd be limiting permit holders to two hours as well if you make the change in 170-10. So, that's why I've been in touch with the Police Department to say-
We still have to figure-
Yeah, we're still trying to figure out. But I think the intention would be that for residents, it would still be, if it was unlimited parking, we would leave it unlimited parking for residents, and increase that one open area to a two-hour parking zone unless you had the permit, essentially extending the permit area. But again, the way that they wrote it, there was some confusion, because it looks like they're asking for two changes in different ordinances over the same road area. So, that's why we have some inquiries in through the engineer and through my office to say, "Hey, exactly what are you asking for?" But assuming the Council's okay with it, you know, we would be able to have an ordinance for the next meeting. I would presume the intention is to not make this extra area that doesn't have any regulation at all, not two-hour parking for all, everyone, but increase the resident parking area. Or if the Council would prefer to just make it a two-hour, you know, whether you're a resident or not, you have to move your car, but obviously, I think right now with no regulation, I'm guessing residents are parking there much longer than two hours.
To me, the problem in Summit Avenue is like, the people, they park in the right-hand side especially. Should be no parking from Beach to Excess, at least in the right-hand side. And that way, the traffic can flow. Most of these houses, now they've been owned by doctors or whatever, right? So, the doctors or the nurses, whatever work for them, they park their cars outside there all day long. Okay? So, that's a problem. Sometime, you are coming in Summit Avenue and the traffic is all the way to Passaic Street.
Where are their employees gonna park?
Ah?
Where are their employees gonna park? They're gonna end up selling their businesses and moving out of there?
Well, they got, they should be making the parking lot in the back of the house bigger. So, that's a problem.
How can you make it, their mess?
Well, that's the problem, that's the problem that we got right now when we allow, when there was one family house, to have the doctors' business there.
Right.
And now, all the people, the employers and the people that are gonna go and get served from the doctor, they park and it's inconvenient. Every time it get worse and worse and worse.
Well, maybe, do we understand, if someone doesn't live there, like, if it's a business, how many resident stickers do they get? Like, are they getting unlimited resident stickers that they could let all their employees park there all day?
Well, technically, they're not residents.
That's what I'm saying.
So, here's what I think will bring some clarity to this.
Especially at least, Ted, at least, at least three blocks, three blocks before Excess Street, they should be denied the parking in the right-hand side. At least three blocks before Excess.
Okay, so the next Council meeting, this is an introduction, we can still fix this before-
Yeah, I don't think it's introduced. We didn't put it up for this meeting. It's not up, because the Police Department has still not gotten back as to what they want.
So, I'm gonna contact the Police Department, double-check this with John Jar, and I'll find out about residential parking, if we're giving permits still to these locations, because they're really not residential housing anymore, they're really quasi-commercial space for doctors.
It's what's called an overlay zone.
Overlay.
And sometime, they are dry where they are empty, but until you see cars right in front of the house, all day long.
They're saving their driveways for the clients, and then they're parking the employees on the street. And maybe that's okay. I think we gotta wait and hear from the Police Department, what they're, we don't really know by reading this, what the real recommendation is.
Good, that's correct. Because some portion, like I said, some portion of Summit right now is two-hour parking for everyone, no resident stickers available. Some of it is two-hour parking for resi, unless you have a resident sticker. And then you do have this one little several-block area where there's zero regulation, where theoretically, you can leave your car there for two weeks.
That's what we're trying to correct.
At least, you enforce the two-hour parking, at least you alleviate the problem. But I know that there are people that they park more than four hours, easy.
Well, the problem used to be that they would park there to take the bus into the city to go to work.
That's another problem.
So, that's why the two-hour thing came.
Okay.
So, you know, just to give you a little history of what happened. Because a lot of folks were complaining about that, people were parking to get on the bus and go.
Yeah, that's right. Yeah, and the Beach and Central, like, the area between Beach and Central, I mean, it's not big. I mean, it's only a couple blocks.
Right.
But in that area, it's, you know, it's free-for-all, do whatever you, you know, someone could come in from New York City and leave their car parked there all day long.
Because the people, the resident around that area, they don't wanna complain, because they can put the car in their driveway.
Okay, we good with this for now?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Number two is the Environmental Commission ordinance. Basically, the Environmental Commission has been lapsed. And this is the, basically, restructuring of a Environmental Commission that the city has had in place. Myself, Councilman Bataglia, Deputy Mayor Sims interviewed a whole host of people who put in for these different committees. And I have to tell you, honestly, these were genuinely really good people, who were really interested, some of them very young, which was very surprising.
They got the knowledge.
They were, what we would refer to as millennials, and they were interested in the city and the commitment and how things were going. And I was really impressed with all the parties. So, basically, right now, the four that are being considered for the Environmental Commission were Joseph Dunsey, Jessica Parsick, her husband John, and Dr. Richard Lepinto, who is an environmental guy, who has a doctor degree in this. So, these are all good people that I think would enhance our board and obviously help us to get reestablished. So, I'm making that recommendation. I did get some information that was forwarded to me about Ruth N., who was from the Cultural Arts Board. Apparently, she had served as a member, which is now defunct. I made some suggestion of naming it the Green Team and some other suggestions.
I think she came over to visit me and went to a bunch of things. I think the main theme of her suggestion, and I think it might be a good one to roll into the Environmental Commission, is now that we are really doing a lot more, even with the Clean Communities and the Clean Communities Grant, she was just asking that, even though that's not called out in the ordinance, you know, that we do things such as, you know, tie into the Clean Communities, do maybe more of the pickups, better job, you know, more garbage, looking into garbage receptacles that aren't as ugly as some of them are, and, you know, tree, trying with the Shade Tree Commission. She just said, if we're going to reinstitute that, would we consider tying those elements together and making that also part of their task? In other words, you know, keep Hackensack, go green, keep Hackensack clean, like, she was coming up with some little slogans.
Our new sanitation trucks are gonna echo that sentiment.
Yeah. So, she did take a lot of time to compose her thoughts, and I wanna make sure that everyone, you know, heard it. And I think it probably does make sense, because we've been doing a lot more, since Greg got involved with the Clean Communities, he's been doing a lot more.
Yep.
You know, they've been getting a lot more done, a lot more accomplished, and we've been getting more grant money because of that, so that's a good thing.
Almost a self-fulfilling prophecy, you go out and work hard, they seem to reward us with more money to go work even harder. It works. Number three is crossing guard post. There was some conversation at one of the Cal meetings, complaints about that the city had not had the appropriate or the correct number of crossing guards on post to make these intersections and locations safe. We involve the Police Department, the Traffic Bureau, John Jar. And the crossing guard positioning will now be at Broadway and New Street to facilitate the increased usage of the entrance of the school there. Obviously, there's more pedestrians in the area of Broadway and Holt because of the school there. We've already added crossing guard at State and Passaic. And we're going back to look, which is my only question, how many students do we have crossing at Hudson and Munaki, which was the other concern that was brought up by, I think her name is Ruth?
Ruth.
Ruth. Who complained that we were not processing. I reached out to the BOE, and I have not heard or received information back, but I'll try again to find out how many students actually cross at this intersection. I'm not saying that, you know, one child is, would make the difference of whether we positioned somebody, but I'd just like some factual information, because once you commit to these crossing guard posts, you're pretty much there for many, many years. So, I just wanna make sure that we're investing our resources appropriately.
I had a question on this, and Stephanie, you're probably more familiar, because you drive there every day. When I read it, I thought it said, it said, it said, "School buses need to use their flashing lights", and I think that is critical, that, you know, they have their flashing lights, so it's gonna eliminate a lot of the problems with people just driving while they're, they're parked, they're picking up. But then they were saying not to let parents use Holt Street for pickup and drop-off, make them use South Main or Broadway intersections. Now, where do they park now when they pick up and drop off?
Parents?
Yeah.
All over, all over.
Right, I was there today, it was crazy.
Yeah, that I was actually gonna ask if, is it the crossing guard's responsibility to also move traffic along?
No.
Okay, because that's going on.
Crossing guard's absolute function is just what it says, crossing the street. They're not traffic control officers. This is why I am now very much requesting the Police Department to send officers that are on these districts in patrol in these sections be on post when these people are brought to school and dropped off, and when they're departed at the end of the day. Because I've seen some photographs on people's phones that I've taken of just people double-parked and triple-parked and kids serpentine between cars. It's just a recipe of disaster.
Parker, too. Parker is just as bad.
That makes it family.
But sticking with this one, maybe we need to take a better look at this. I mean, if Holt Street is the problem because of the buses, maybe the buses should pick up behind the school on the other side.
That was explored, and I forget the reason why that that was not possible, but I will follow up on that.
I mean, I think that we know right now there's a lot of congestion there, because we've got construction going on, and that Holt Street is only gonna get worse, so.
Wondering, once the, once the building's built, that parking lot's open, those buses should pull into the parking lot, drop the children off in the parking lot. And that eliminates that whole situation.
Now, they only cross the street.
No, they, they have to park in the same way they park now. The only thing is the parents.
Why? Why can't they pull into the lot?
Because if this is the, no, if this is the building, the buses they park right now here. The problem that were before it, that sometime, the buses, by the time the kid again, and the bus, they got the red lights on, and they can't have the yellow light, because the kid, only thing they do from the building, they go right into the bus. And no reason why this guy got the red lights on.
You can't, the red light has to be on while the children are going in and out.
Well, that's, well, that's the recommendation of the cap now, they say, at the moment. But at sometime, they got the red light, even nobody's on it.
Right, so when they're, when they're turning the corner from Broadway to Holt, they, some of them have their red lights on there. So, now you have all of Broadway backed up.
And nobody's on the bus.
Put them in that, what's the parking lot?
It's where they really need to be, is where their parking is, because that's right on top of the school. They don't want the kids, they don't want to cross the street.
Okay.
Remember, they have those nine spots?
Right.
Yeah.
That's really where the buses should be.
I don't think they can make that turn.
They don't fit there.
They couldn't fit there.
They're not gonna fit.
Now, the other thing is, at least for now, because let's face it, the M&amp;M Building, by the time they really gonna use that parking lot, the construction company gonna be at least another forty days, easy. So, what the result right now, at least, we give to these people at least half of that parking lot. This is where the construction is gonna be, this is the parking lot. While we don't do this, right, and allow all these parents or teachers to park in the way, take some of the congestion away.
It's gonna be for the two brothers.
Right, the other thing that came up today, there was a conference call with Steve, myself, we had a meeting with the DEP, and we're still on the Bohemian.
The parking lot behind Bohemia.
And that appears that if we can get some-
The teachers, they should be go over there and walk one block, and allow the other people, they're going to pick it up, the kids to park around that area. And that, between the space that we can get in the parking lot of the M&amp;M Building, then the other parking lot behind there at Bohemia, right, that the teacher, they can put the car there, then the congestion gonna disappear.
So, we're working with Mr. Kleiman to pursue this. We, like I said, we had a meeting with the DEP today.
Yeah.
It went very well. They gave us some ammunition that we need to pursue this legally. Hopefully, Steve-
You can put forty-
It may end up having to have a, you know, there may be a court filing necessary on this, but as long as the state and the DEP are backing us up, I think we've got some powerful friends.
So, once that commences, then we would pick up probably twenty to twenty-five parking spots at that site, which would, which would certainly supply enough, I would hope, the parking for the teachers, at least get them moved out of the way, and then we'll see what the long-term solutions-
You have to make sure that the board is on board and gonna do this, that's the key. They have, they're the ones that have to have the teachers park there.
Oh, I understand.
But I think in the meantime, the police have to be there, because the crossing guard where she is now is a big spot where parents are double-parked, and you have her trying to cross kids, and they're parked right in front of her, and you can't see.
Broadway and New.
Yeah, it's a bad, bad area.
Broadway and New Street.
And the police should just ticket, you know, whoever's doing it, ticket them, because, you know, some parents are doing the right thing and driving around, driving around, looking for spots, and other ones are just pulling up and double-parked.
Okay. The next is number four, which is the loss of Tony Sedita. We have a position on the Shade Tree Board, and we asked Fred Cole to fill that position, and he has accepted that. So, the Mayor and Council will have to approve adding him to the board, but I think Fred will do a good job. And I think with his occupation and the functions that he performed to the city, I don't know if he'll be a hundred percent replacement for Tony Sedita, but he's certainly a good start. So, I make that recommendation. Number five is the removal of the parking meters on Atlantic Street. This comes, like everything else, with a few issues with the back and forth of what the city is just trying to accomplish. But basically, we asked Sergeant O'Connor from our Traffic Bureau to weigh in on the removal of parking meters on Atlantic Street. And he wrote the, Captain Aquillo, his response, and basically, it brings in the Traffic Bureau's opinion is, is opinion that allowing parking on Atlantic Street in the area would only bring liability to the city of Hackensack. Allowing vehicles to park in a traffic lane may contribute to possible accidents. Atlantic Street is frequently used as a direct route for ambulances headed to and from Hackensack University Medical Center Emergency Room. These larger vehicles need extra room to pass freely. So, the thought is, is to remove the parking meters on Atlantic Street, basically in that zone, and then we're gonna have another discussion on the other end of Atlantic Street and how that's gonna be pursued.
Yeah, because the proposed ordinance, I think, is only for, you know, basically, a couple-block area. It's only about five or six meters, it's not a lot.
It was part of the plan for the, for the park and for the Cultural Arts Center. My concern is, I don't disagree with that, don't get me wrong, but as soon as you cross State Street going west, it's actually narrower than Atlantic Street with the cars parked there, because there's parking on both sides down there, and so you're-
You're funneling in anyway.
For one block, it's wide, and all the way to the hospital, it's narrow as can be. So, I, you know, I really don't understand the concern for five spots, but there's fifty spots on the way going to the hospital.
But what happened is, in Atlantic, on Atlantic Street, when you are driving Atlantic Street around that area before railroad avenue, you know that it's a narrow street, and there's a car in front of you, you're gonna be right behind, there's no choice. Here, there's two cars coming, and when you get to that spot, like, let's say, I parked the van just in purpose. And then this guy continued, this guy had to put the brakes, and then go into the left lane. If another car come from behind, bingo.
But Atlantic Street coming north from the hospital, at that intersection, is only one lane. It only becomes two for five, for the length of Atlantic Street from State Street to Warren Street.
Where?
Or Main Street. Only from State to Main is a two. The rest of the way, it's one lane, with parking on both sides.
Yeah, but it's a condition. You picture two people driving, and when they get to the, the car that is parked there, they have to stop.
Yeah, but there shouldn't be two people pulling in there. It really should have been made one lane, when they did.
Well, that's, that's a different ballgame.
That's the problem.
That's the problem.
Because it's made two lanes. It either, if it's gonna have parking, it has to be made one lane, or if it's two lanes, you can't have the parking.
And the way it is right now, it's safe to remove the parking space and not allow to park.
Well, we're not desperate for the parking now, but in the future, I think we have to address-
Well, one of the things we could, we could hood those parking sections and make them prohibited temporarily, and not change the ordinance, and let, just sort this out later if we want.
The other problem, yeah, but the other problem that you have is people, they cross around, around that area, they cross from the park right to the parking lot. And if you got a car parked there, and you're gonna pass in front of that car, the car that gonna come, the left side can take you anytime.
You're gonna-
It better that you have it.
You're gonna have an issue with parking, or we're crossing here all the time.
And one thing that I did think about that wasn't mentioned in the memo, because of the new utilization of the H-PAC, the Atlantic Street Park, and the lower level-
Gallery.
The gallery, when you do have an event, you may have some options. If you leave that for parking, you have no options, because it will be parked. Because we either have to move a fire truck in, or we have to move a tow truck in, or-
Well, that, for our Friday night events, those, that street was packed every time.
Right. So, there's a little part of me that says, maybe not having parking meters might be a godsend till we can figure out what the new-
But then, we shouldn't allow parking, then, no parking.
Right, that was my point. Because the other thing that that does, when you don't have cars parked there, you're gonna have the attraction, you're gonna have kids milling in and out, cutting through there. You want as clear sight distance as you possibly can, so people can see this, and obviously, see Atlantic Street part and the functions that go on there also. So, there's a little part of me that says, I think I'd eliminate the parking and just leave it.
And to me, if we're gonna fix this, we should fix the whole area. I mean, that, the people that are parking for free on State Street, just we don't have none of those meters.
That's another issue.
Right by, you know, Meridian there, on that corner, State and Warren, that whole street has parking without parking meters.
Right, and the reason why that it has not been, reset the meters is, is because the stalls that were painted on it were originally done for one direction, and now we have to change them. So, as soon as we get them changed, we're gonna reset the parking meters and make this, so basically, they figured out that they're gonna provide space so somebody can pull into the middle section, and the two end ones come in from one end or the other, so you're not blocking trying to, um, parallel park. So, it would make that elimination, so you're not blocking that, because now that State Street is two-way, when you come down to Atlantic, unless you're in the left lane to make the turn onto Atlantic, you gotta cut over, because that now becomes a single line through there. So, it is, it is a little different than what, obviously, it's two ways.
Right, but you're seeing all the renters, the Meridian folks are all parking there for free.
Right, and they need the building, that's what I got to talk about.
And then, and then Warren Street, too, we removed some of those meters during construction of the Cultural Arts.
And they're gonna go back.
That all has to go back, too, because people are just parking for free in that whole section there.
So, would the Council like to table this for now? Would you like to have these meters put in?
Well, I would, I would take the meters out for now, but I think we need to address it based on the demand for parking, possibly, and the traffic stuff. You're, like I said, you're-
I mean, it's easy to take, it's, look, to put, if we take the meters out now by ordinance, you can bring them back in, you know, about two meetings, so plus ten days. So, you know, you'd have fifty days to bring them back if you-
Part I don't understand is, you know, you're coming from a very narrow street, right? And then you have a short distance of this two blocks, and we wouldn't even, if they didn't make that two lanes, we wouldn't even be having a discussion.
But that's the issue, John. If they take the two lanes away, then you can keep your parking, that's the problem.
And even after the parking, though, that's where it goes to two lanes, where you can go, and eventually, you're gonna be able to go right or left onto Main Street.
Right.
Or straight.
Right.
So, you still get into two lanes. Even if those meters were there, you're breaking into two lanes down by Main Street.
So, why don't we take them out, but let's make sure that people don't say, "Yippee, now we can park here for free", and still park there.
But they don't park there right now.
Oh, you have to have no parking.
You see some people park there.
The ordinance, I drafted this ordinance, I don't think we have it on the agenda, because I think they wanted to talk to you first, but, you know, the ordinance would put this as a no-parking zone. So, it would actually, the ordinance changes from a metered zone to a no-parking zone, so it would not be a, you know, free-for-all, it would specifically be no parking, they would be able to put up signs and all of that. And if you're good with that, that ordinance is already in the Clerk's office.
It's on, on, right on.
Oh, is it? Is it already on?
Yeah.
Okay, I didn't know we actually put it, so. Then there's no need-
We'll do it, we'll do it.
We'll do it.
It's for food transport.
Yeah. Pretty soon, they want, plays a year.
Yeah, there you go, south side of Atlantic. Oh, there you go. Number six is the 2018 Risk Management Consultant Agreement with Ottersted Insurance Agency, which is our risk manager. This just has to be approved by resolution. This is our insurance facilitator. We've used the same firm. I make this recommendation, this is just a procedural thing that needs to be approved. And number seven is the issue of handicap parking. I forwarded a email to the Council of all, which are forty-five since Christmas-
Forty-five.
Of all of the either expired or fraudulent handicap parking stickers that the Hackensack Police Department has picked up, which goes to the credit of them and shameful on the people that are still using this when they really don't need it, and we have the physically impaired trying to find in or have egress or ingress to shopping or whatever facility that they need.
How much is their fine?
I don't know.
It's $250.
I think it's $250. Been a while since I've issued that summons, but-
Can we contact the gentleman who was here? He was a handicap gentleman who spoke out on this.
Overlook?
He lives over on Overlook? And just let him know, because that's quite an accomplishment. I'm sure he'd be happy hearing that.
He definitely sang the praises of the Hackensack Police Department for their efforts. The other thing that came up here is- Um, the other thing that came up here is I also have a request from a gentleman who wants us to entertain reserved handicap parking spaces for residents basically only. So basically, the person's handicap.
That's what he wanted, same guy, what's his name, do you remember?
Um, I have it downstairs, um, I didn't bring it up with me, but it sits on my desk. But in either case...
That's a tough one.
The, the problem with that is the minute we make that offer.
Like a private parking.
It's private parking for him and now anybody else that's handicapped can't use the placard. And I explained to this gentleman in pretty detail that, uh, well, other towns, and I said, well, that may, that may be true, sir. But here in the city of Hackensack, where parking is a premium and we have a lot of movement of residents and, and people coming to the city and people that are physically challenged and handicapped, to isolate them because you're the only one that can use that parking. Well, you know, I, I, I said, I'm not trying to debate that there isn't a need for it and I understand that you personally are, are, have that condition and I understand it, but you're not twenty-four seven here and the minute you pull away, anybody that wants to use that can't, because now we're in a conflict that we basically have reserved handicap parking.
I mean, it is, I, I mean, I will tell you, some municipalities, it is not, it, it does happen. I mean, I have seen towns where it will say, you know, a handicap parking spot reserved for license plate number, you know, Q X seed one, two, three. Um, and, yeah, a lot of times those parking spots, you don't see anybody in them all day long, but it is a reserved parking. Generally, when that's done, it has to be, you know, somewhat extraordinary circumstances, or they'll, they'll have a committee or something, you know, where, you know, where, uh, you know, you, exactly, you have to, you have to try and figure out how to do it, it, it becomes very tricky. Um, where they have to demonstrate it's not, you know, it's some exceptional circumstance, but it's pretty rare. I'm just saying, I've seen it done, it does have some considerable challenges to do it about fairness, you know, about...
Situation is because there's a van and, you know, he needs the ramp, that space that a handicap spot allows to get out. So he can't even use a regular spot even if it's available, because, you know, it's not configured for him to get out. But that's, that's his issue in his case, and I understand that. You know, I, I agree, I don't think we can designate any individual spots.
But I did promise him that I would bring it before the mayor and council, I would get him a response and I would respond back to him, so. Um, I'll, I'll take that as a...
Yeah, but what about, I mean, that's on the street, but what about?
And the building itself.
In the building itself, it's, it's, maybe we could work something out somehow, I don't know.
Somebody go out and he go in.
I mean, if there's a building, building's supposed to have a certain number of handicap parking spots.
He lives in one of the high rises.
But, yeah, they're, they are supposed to, you know, have, have X number of, of handicap parking if they've got, uh, a parking garage. Um, you know, again, whether it's big enough to suit an individual's particular needs.
Unfortunately, the city has some buildings that have no parking on them and, and way back when, when it was allowed, the street parking. So, uh, and we've had a couple of those complaints in here where they came in and said, oh, you got to change this. You didn't have any when you started, all of a sudden, it's not the city's responsibility to, to grow some for you in the interim. It's not that, we had the parking available, we do have municipal lots, you can certainly buy reserved parking spots and, 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 and get it. I mean, I hate to be that person at times, but unfortunately, sometimes I just can't assist everyone with their needs because, um, you know, we're, we're taking a, an old city here and, and, and making it apply to 2018. It's going to come with some bumps and curves and it, that we just can't address. If that is all that we have, this would be the end of the city manager's report for tonight.
Hey, with that, I'd like a motion to open to the public, please.
Offer.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent, Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
And Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Anybody from the public who'd like to speak, please go forward. Seeing no one from the public, motion to close to the public.
Offer.
Second.
Call in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Maybe a little bit there, clear. The, um, you know, motion to go into closed session, please.
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
And the dedications.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent, Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to discuss certain actions under Section 7B7 and 7B8 of the Open Public Meetings Act, which pertains to matters falling within attorney-client privilege, ongoing litigation and personnel matters concerning the employment of a current or prospective public employee. Whereas the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack is in the opinion that such circumstances may presently exist. And whereas the mayor and council wish to discuss the following issues, personnel matters, ongoing litigation, matters involving attorney-client privilege, matters involving the purchase, lease, or acquisition of real property, and any pending or anticipated litigation or contract negotiations. Now therefore be it resolved that the mayor and council of the city of Hackensack deem it necessary to exclude the public from this discussion. The outcome of the discussion will be disclosed within ninety days or at such a time as the interests of the city do not require confidentiality.
Okay. You see everybody at eight o'clock?
Steve.
Oh, Steve, yeah.
I, I don't have any specific litigation to discuss, if something comes up in closed session, I'll announce it after.
Okay.
Thank you.
Everybody's eight?
Uh, we need a motion to...
Need a motion to, uh, come out of closed session, please?
I'll offer.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent, Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye. Now we need a motion to close the, uh, council in the hall.
Um, and before you do that, I just, my, my typical announcement, we did end up talking about a couple of litigation matters. So I will announce that we did talk about Zisa versus Hackensack. We also did talk about a matter, uh, Nunnermacher versus Hackensack. I will note for the record that that matter involves the Hackensack University Medical Center as a party and, uh, the mayor excused himself for that part of the discussion.
Okay. Need the motion? Motion to, uh, close the council hall?
Offer.
Second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Von Rudenberg?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Canastrino?
Aye.
Deputy Mayor Sims is absent, Councilman Bataglia?
Aye.
Mayor LaBrass?
Aye.
Now we need a roll...